Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board on March 1st, 2022. Welcome, everybody. The agenda starts with the approval of the last, the minutes of the last meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion, please? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Marie?
Um, hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Nancy? Hi. Kate?
Hi.
I think that's it.
Uh, yeah, I don't see.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is the special permit application for the property of 8 Hawthorne Road. And in the clerk's absence, Marie Raftory is going to read the public notice, please.
Town of Stockbridge Planning Board Special Permit Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Stockbridge Planning Board, acting as a special permit granting authority, is scheduling a public hearing at Stockbridge Town offices and via remote for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, to consider the application of the Peanut Gallery LLC at 8 Hawthorne Road to construct a new single-family dwelling under Section 6.5 of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The complete application and plans are on file in the planning board office and town offices.
Thank you, Marie. Elizabeth, I think, do you want to say something?
Yes, please. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Goodman. I'm the attorney for the owners of 8 Hawthorne Road in Stockbridge, known as Daniel and Becky Pinkus through their company. And their engineering consultant is away from town right now. He's out of the state. And so we've asked for a continuance of this whole hearing until your next regularly scheduled meeting, which I believe is March, the second Tuesday, March 15th.
Okay. The request has been made for a continuance. Is there any discussion before we vote on this? Hearing none.
Motion that we continue the hearing for, what's the name of the company?
The Peanut Gallery LLC.
Until March 15th, 8 Hawthorne Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there any way that the documents can be made available on the web?
Who asked that?
Peter Strauss.
I'm a neighbor.
Yeah, if, um, if you sent me an email, I can email them to you.
Okay, thank you. And could I have your email address, please?
Sure, it's, um, uh, let's see. J. Carmichael, C.A.R.M.I.C.H.A.E.L.
J.E.N.N.Y.?
No, just J.
Oh, J. Period or no period?
No period. Then C.A.R.M.I.C.H.A.E.L.
At?
At Stockbridge. Dash, M.A. dot G.O.V.
J. Carmichael, no, no period, at Stockbridge dash M.A. dot G.O.V.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
But I, I'm Ruth Friendly, also a neighbor. Could I, could you also send it to me?
Sure. Yeah, just send me an email.
All right.
We're calm.
Pick up the phone. Okay, any other questions, comments from anybody? It's been moved. Go ahead, Kate.
Jennifer, you might want to post the packet to the, um, to the agenda for the, you know, when you post the, the other materials for the next meeting, you might want to include, include the application.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing, special permit public hearing, until March 15th. If there are no further discussions or comments, questions, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Marie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you on the 15th.
Thank you.
Okay. Racing through the agenda, we come to, uh, the ongoing discussion we've been having about the Cottage Era State Bylaw as it relates to, um, the zoning bylaw on cluster subdivisions and the subdivision regulation, um, as mentioned in the agenda. Can I just quickly ask a question? I noticed the subdivision regulations were approved more than 40 years ago. Does that explain why they are not part of the zoning bylaws?
They're state. It's a state law. And we have.
So the town, any town has no, no ability to make any changes?
No, but there are waivers that if people, if I was under, there are waivers that they can go into.
Right.
But no, everything stays the same. It's a state thing.
Okay. It's just, I'm just kind of curious why, even though there's, there's state, there's state language, we wouldn't incorporate them in either the towns or the planning board's bylaws?
No, no.
We don't do that? Are there other such regulations that routinely would be subject to planning board involvement that are not in either our bylaws or the, the town's bylaws?
Not that I know of, but right offhand, I think.
Okay. It's just a sort of administrative question. I think the, the, uh, the reason for these reviews and, and this discussion is to see if the Cottage Era State Bylaw is different enough, it seems to me, others can chime in, from these two subdivision and cluster, uh, papers, the, the cluster subdivision bylaw and the subdivision regulations. And obviously, one difference, and I know this will prompt some discussion, is that the Cottage Era State Bylaw, as it currently exists, is, requires a special permit. And I do not see, or I did not see special permit language in the other two documents. There, there are approvals, there's reference in many places to approvals, not just of this body, the planning board, but also the CONCOM and the Board of Health. But I didn't see a reference in either of the other documents to, um, special permit approvals. Does anybody want to comment on that or have other comments about this topic generally?
The subdivision, um, regulations, the only time that we would, they would come with a special permit is they want like a waiver from, from the subdivision regulations.
State ones or town ones?
No, the subdivision regulations.
Please.
Oh, yeah.
So does that mean that a subdivision can be put in without?
Well, hey, speak up, because I think that's the relevant, one of the relevant questions.
That's what you're saying.
What were you saying, Marie?
No, I said, is, is that, that it means that a subdivision can be put in without a special permit? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what.
Yeah, if it meets.
It's a by right.
Yeah, it's a by right. Right.
Um, so, yeah, I, I understand it a little bit differently. And, um, if you look at, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If you look at, um, section 4.206, maybe the easiest thing is if I share that, share that section out. Hold on a second. Can you see that?
Yes.
It says, "In reviewing and determining whether to approve, approve with modifications, or deny a definitive plan, the planning board may consider whether the definitive plan is in conformance with the design standards in Section 5 of these regulations." And then it goes on, and before that, um, you know, it describes a public hearing. So.
Right.
While I don't, you know, while I don't actually see the word "special permit," I do see a review process that includes a public hearing with a review and decision.
Yeah, it does. And it includes, uh, I think the public hearing and any, and the preliminary application at least, or preliminary approach to the planning board needs to go to the CONCOM and the Board of Health as well. But again, um, the approvals, the approval language, I think, is a little vague. And, you know, I'm no lawyer, and I haven't talked to, to town council about this. But, um, you know, it's always been my understanding that subdivision approvals were by right and, uh, and not by special permit. I, I acknowledge that there's language in here about, uh, public hearings and preliminary review of plans and final review of plans and all the technical stuff. But, um, it still seems to me there's a, there's a question around, or maybe there isn't a question, around the fact that these, these regulations and the zoning, and the cluster subdivision reg, uh, bylaw don't call for special permit approval, which has its own particular meaning and, and requirements, right?
Bill, can I?
Yes, Marie.
Um, Kate, could I ask you to put up, um, 4.2.10? That may help. That says certificate of approval. I mean, that may help answer your question. Um, it's like the next page after what you just had.
So, right here?
I have 4.2, or 10.
4.2.
2, 210, 4.210.
Certificate of approval.
And it's under certificate of approval?
Oops.
After a hearing required section 4.205 and after the report of any other boards or commissions, or the lapse of 45 days without, the planning board shall approve, or if such plan does not comply with the subdivision control law, or the rules and regulations of the planning board, or the recommendations of the Board of Health shall modify and approve or disapprove the plan. If the planning board modifies or disapproves such a plan, it shall state in its vote reasons for this action. The action of the planning board in respect of such plan shall be by vote and noted on Form G, certificate of approval, copies which, you know, certified, da, 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 da. Final approval, if granted, shall be endorsed on the original drawing of the definitive plan by the signatures of the majority of the planning board. So you gotta at least approve the, the plan, whether that's considered a special permit. Approval of the definitive plan does not constitute laying out the accept, approval of the definitive plan does not constitute the laying out or acceptance by the town of, oh, of streets, okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, Kate, go ahead.
No, 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 that's all right. Um, Bill, like, you know, it might be worth, um, I'd recommend checking with town council to find out what the distinction is.
Yeah, yeah, I will do that. It's, as, as you, as you say, Kate and, and Marie, these, these pieces of, these regulations and bylaws are riddled with the word approval.
Yeah.
But not with special permit.
Special permit.
And.
What's the difference? That's what you're asking?
So I'm going to.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah.
So I'm, well, I'm guessing that, but, nah, I, I would check with town council.
Yeah, I mean, to, those of you who've been around longer than I have, when was the last subdivision approved?
The Dove Way.
The, the Stone Ridge or Stone, that was it?
Yeah.
And Gary, what year was that?
Uh, um, I, I just don't remember. It was a long time ago, though.
Was it like in 13 or?
Yeah, I think, it was in the early, well, early 2000s, I think, right?
I think, let's see, I went on the board in 2012, and it was right before I went on the board, I think.
Yeah, so it was probably about, because this lasted, this subdivision lasted a long time to, uh, to get approved because it really was a, a legal fight. And, um.
Yeah.
I think it was prob, I would say maybe even 2011 even, maybe. Because we were in court a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, the important thing to me was, um, in reading through it, I don't remember where I kept, I've heard it several times, people refer to it as a by right, but it really is not, as I read it.
I think, I think that's.
That's a funny.
It's, it's a phrase that maybe needs further definition, and it's another question for Donna. What, what actually does by right mean? And how do we, how has it come to, to be used in connection with sub, properly or improperly with the subdivision regulations?
I mean, by right only means that if they meet all the requirements that are set forward, that they can go forward. But in between that, there's a lot of negotiations and.
Yeah.
Discussions, you know?
But isn't, can't you say the same thing about a special permit?
Sure.
If they meet the, the requirements that are stipulated here under.
It's just that I think a, a special permit gives you, gives the town an awful lot more,
leeway.
More, more.
Control.
There's, there's more, my underst, what I was going to, to venture was that we perhaps would hear from town council that with a special permit, the board has much more discretionary input and control than with subdivision. But I, I think it would, I'd be interested to hear their comment. I mean, um, I've just shared out section 3.2, Plan Belief to Not Require Approval, and that is specifically the wording that addresses, you know, when we get the formes.
Right.
That is specifically approval not required. And here, they lay it out and they describe those situations under which you do not need subdivision approval.
Right. Right.
But you still need approval.
But you still need approval.
You still need to, yeah, you still need to.
Not a special permit, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And the interesting thing to me was, you know, with these approvals not required, is that we never see the same engineers come before the board for the formes. And that's because it's very specifically written that you have to have a site plan by a certified, um, by a surveyor, you know, with a, with a state license and seal, and the plan has to be stamped with their seal.
And, and you're saying that in an A and R, in, in an approval not required, that's not part of the process?
In an approval not required, in a form A, they have to have, they have to present the board with a site plan by a licensed, um, surveyor.
That's what I thought. That's what we've always seen, ever.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And I think on the special permits that we handle in the LPOD, it's, it's not quite, I have to look at the wording again, but I think it's not quite as clear.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, I would think that, I mean, this is an aside, that with the LPOD, it would be really, you know, with such tiny lots often, it would be equally important to have an actual, you know, a stamped certified site plan. But we don't always get those.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I will, I will talk with Donna this week, and, um, to the extent I can share with you without creating a deliberation, um, her, her thoughts, I'll try, I'll ask her to put them in writing. I will do so. And, and we can, we can continue this discussion, um, at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, since we've, we're down two people, seems like we should continue it.
Yeah. Is there any other business? Any other points?
Separate from this, separate from.
Or relating to this.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say something.
Sure.
I watched the CONCOM meetings, you know? And they have been working on redoing their performance standards. And they've been working on that for several weeks now, and they're, they're trying to, you know, get them up to snuff. So they've decided to use our LPOD language in their performance standards so that we'll all be on the same page and doing something. So they wanted me to, because I was on Zoom, they saw I was on Zoom.
Yeah.
So they wanted me to relay that to you guys, that, um, and, and maybe kind of work with them, so our languages are similar as they approve, you know, the same things that we have to, the same parcels we have to approve. So I think it would be, they didn't say, you know, let's get together and talk about it, but I think that it would be good for us to have the same kind of language, you know, approving the same kind of things.
Yeah. You know, this may be heresy, but I, I read about that. I saw the.
Oh, okay.
And, and your, the, the request that you pursue this. Thank you for doing that. It raises in my mind again the question of, why don't we give LPOD responsibility to the CONCOM? Why, why does this, why is this a planning board matter?
When did it become a planning board matter? Gary, do you remember?
There must be a reason.
It was always there when I started, so.
Planning board. But it, it is, it is definitely intended to be a conservation, um, bylaw.
Yeah. That's, that's sort of my point.
It's kind of like the stormwater thing, that really was more theirs than ours.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I hadn't really thought about it.
I'm not, uh, I'm not trying to create work for lawyers or, or anybody else, but I just think the logic of, and it's, it was, I was reminded of it in, in the context of this, the point you just made, that they're trying to conform their language to ours on the LPOD. And when I, and I thought, well, why do they need to conform their language to ours? Why don't they just take it over? Why, why don't they become responsible for LPOD applications?
How do you go about doing that? Who makes that decision?
Well, it would have to be, you know.
We would ask the select board and ask.
The same way, the same way we did the storm, the stormwater.
Yeah, we would just say that, you know, float the idea that it's, it's really more in their bailiwick than ours.
Yeah.
And we would, you know.
Yeah, they need to also.
Come before town meeting?
Yeah, they'd have to vote it.
Yeah.
To change it.
Yeah. Although I, I can't imagine it would be a controversial issue for town meeting, unless I'm missing some political angle here.
Yeah, they're also pursuing getting a conservation consult, uh, what's, agent?
Agent.
Agent, they're looking into that as well. And we talked about that at one point and saying, could we share it?
Yeah.
To look at the stuff we do, that's when we were talking about the bylaw, where we were talking about conservation and, and ecology and all that.
And you know, a year ago or more, two years ago, we were talking about joint site visits. Because we were always going to the same, not always, but often going to the same properties.
But then we got into the fact that you couldn't talk.
Well, it doesn't really serve a purpose.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's kind of redundant. So.
I think we talked about this before. Yeah. About.
Yeah.
Questioning why.
I mean, maybe I should talk to Donna about this too, and then to.
Yeah, just ask her what her thoughts are and, and if we were to think about giving the LPOD to the conservation, just like we did with the stormwater.
Yeah, would Ron Brooker have any say in it?
Well, I think we, well, certainly we would ask him.
You know, yeah, I mean, right in the very beginning stages of talking about it.
Yeah.
With stormwater, um, when we, when we started talking about that, Ray Miari's reaction was, well, you know, usually boards don't want to give up authority, but I just really, after observing it for a while, I just wondered why it hadn't been put with Conservation Commission in the first place. And then I talked to, um, I think I talked to John Hart, and I don't remember who else. They agreed that it would be a good fit for the Conservation Commission.
And when did that happen, Kate?
Um, that was about two years ago, I think.
Yeah, two, I think, a few years ago, yeah.
Okay.
Kate, can you stop screen share so we can?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sure thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be everywhere else off the house.
Oh, well.
We've cleared, we've cleared the room.
I see you got an extra table, thank you. Like, there's room for me now.
You're always welcome.
Lots of room.
Thanks for raising that, Marie. That was.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I, I will pursue this with Donna and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to work with the CONCOM. I think we have the same interests, you know, I think it's, it's good to.
Yeah.
I mean, I generally go to their meetings just for that reason, because we said we were going to send a rep, you know, to, to that. So I just kind of, Tuesday's kind of my meeting night. So I go to the CONCOM if I'm not at the planning board.
Now's a good time if we're going to bring it before town meeting.
Yeah, yeah. There may be time to craft the proper language to do it, if, if everybody agrees.
Yeah, I think if we floated the idea to Mike and the select board and, and to the CONCOM, what, and just get their reaction.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I will say that, uh, the LPOD requests, um, when they're done properly, they are, it takes some time to review. I mean, when I go, it takes me about, you know, two or three hours, and then there's questions that come up and so on. So I think it's important to convey to the Conservation Commission that they are somewhat involved.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other business?
There was one, one thing that I wanted to, to ask about getting on the agenda. I had some, I had an idea about how we might make the sign requests flow a little bit better. And I'm wondering if, if we could put that on the agenda for the next meeting, if it's not already too, too busy.
Not sure what's on next week's, or the next meeting. We know that there's.
We have two formes and a special permit.
Okay, so that's fairly, fairly busy.
Yeah, that's too much. Maybe the, the meeting following that?
Yeah.
Will you use that, Jennifer?
To put the sign requests on.
It just.
The first meeting in March, in April.
Yeah, it's, it's just an idea I had to sort of clear up some of the confusion and, and with the hopes that those, those will sort of flow a little bit more, more quickly.
You know, that's fine, but is this something that we can ask Mike and our, our town planner to?
It's really simple, you know, it's really simple. I did up a little flow chart and, you know, I can share that out or if I.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
You've done the work, we'd be happy to see it.
I've done the work, and I just thought, you know, hey, I should run this by the planning board members and see if, you know, see if there's any interest or there's any input.
Yeah, I think anything to streamline or clarify that process, which. which every time we see a sign, we get bogged down in some.
Something.
Should. It would be good, so thank you for that. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all.
Thank you.